Twenty-four meeting of the school committee. The time is seven o'clock, so we'll open the meeting. I would like to remind everyone that you can see there's a camera here. It's going to stream on our YouTube channel and be recorded if anyone wants to watch it at home later. That would be fine. Other people obviously may be recording us as well because that's certainly allowed. So let's rise from the pledge of allegiance and when we're done with that, let's remain standing for a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a moment of silence for those who've lost whom to be our community, particularly one young man who trached and lost his life in one of these frat. Thank you. All right, moving into the agenda. We have correspondence and recognition, community correspondence and emails to the committee. And Ms. McDougall is collecting them and I am going to report on them. There was one, we only just met last week, so there hasn't been a lot of them. An inquiry from a community member about access to the high school track, which I believe this superintendent will cover in his report this evening, out on the track and tennis court progress. He possibly even talked about tennis court access. This is a suggestion, Mr. Powers. And he had a very, a very nice note from a Mitchell School parent praising staff members at the Mitchell School who have interacted with their child this year, bringing them into the school with some higher needs than perhaps a typical student and making the experience very positive. Obviously, this is just an example of all of the staff we have across our district and making sure all students are comfortable and have an ability to learn. You know, as I've said often in the past, when people try to say this, how we treat our most vulnerable students is the way we should judge. So very well done by those staff members who were particularly recognized and generally across the district. Recognition of music booster volunteer, Ms. Will Howard. Mr. Eric Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Yes, you know, we often try to recognize our students, our faculty as much as possible. It's not too often we actually get an email recognizing another parent. But we did, recently we received an email correspondence singing the praises of Ms. Will Howard. So we wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge her years of dedication. She started volunteering for the district when her daughters were in kindergarten. They actually just recently graduated. So we, you know, we typically see parent volunteerism come and go over the years depending on the activities, but to actually have a parent start in kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade is certainly, you know, commendable. Started off with JEMSPHA at the Mitchell School and worked in the PTO there, fundraising efforts such as the iPads and all sorts of activities. If you've ever been involved in JEMSPHA, you know how, why they spread their reach in terms of fundraising and what they do for the students. And then Ms. Will Howard, Howard transitioned over to junior music boosters and then in high school up to music boosters. So really has gone the full spectrum of K-12 and we can't thank her enough for her years of dedication and service. Certainly it's always great to see you at all the different events and I know how much time and effort you put into it. It doesn't go unrecognized and unnoticed. And we just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank you and acknowledge you for all that you've done for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. It's not over yet, because we were proud enough of this email to send it on to our friends in the Bridgewater Town Council who wanted to actually officially recognize Ms. Will Howard. So I have proclamation here from the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater, whereas Margaret Will Howard began volunteering with Georgia H. Mitchell Elementary School Parents' Association thirteen years ago when her daughters were in kindergarten. And whereas Margaret was the resident box talk coordinator, cutting, sorting, and counting thousands of box talks each and every month, earning the school thousands of dollars that went towards playground equipment, mini grants for teachers, special events, and so much more. Whereas Margaret was there for six years to set up, design, build props, decorate, sell tickets, concessions, I'm getting tired, and so much more for every single event JEMSPHA hosted. And whereas Margaret joined the junior music boosters and was an integral part of the success of the music boosters and music programs, as she is a relentless advocate and a tireless supporter of the arts programs and has dedicated all of her spare time to ensure that the musicians, directors, and district have what it needs for the students to thrive and succeed. And whereas Margaret was not only the board's treasurer, vice president, and unofficial historian, she was also the resident photographer, uniform member, gift giver, community liaison, and many other titles. And whereas Margaret has taught future volunteers what they need to know to succeed and leave behind some very big shoes to fill. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, does hereby declare June 12th, 2024, Margaret Will Howard Day, showing the town's appreciation for all that Ms. Will Howard has done through her years of selfless volunteer work, signed by Council President Kevin Perry. All right. Now, why don't we end on a high note all of that? No, just kidding. So now we're into public comment and obviously we welcome public comment on her policies. We do have a twelve-minute time limit in total for public comment and we do ask that everyone keep their statements to three minutes. We have five people preregistered, so if you can do the math, it needs to be a little bit under three minutes, everyone, if you want to get in under the twelve. But if you have other stuff to say, please email it to the school committee and Ms. McDougall and we will certainly read it. So going in order of who was preregistered, we have Ms. Holt of Bridgewater. Ms. Holt, if you'd like to step up.
Good evening Superintendent Powers and members of the Bridgewater Rainham School thirty and twelve band families. We are members of the junior music boosters and parents of students in the band and chorus and Williams Intermediate School and Bridgewater Middle School. We want to inform you of an unfortunate situation with our band and chorus program at the Williams Intermediate School. The spring concert, which is one of two regular performances every band and chorus performs each year, was canceled by the music and choral directors at the Williams due to a drastic reduction in rehearsals they were able to hold this spring due to scheduling. The director informed us that since January they had almost half the amount of rehearsals that they had in the fall, and sometimes had two to three weeks in between each rehearsal. I'm sure you can appreciate that in order for these ensembles to be successful, they need continuity and consistency. The reasons for the scheduled disruptions included half days and vacations, which are occurrences that are obviously scheduled far advance. However, additional rehearsals were missed due to MCAS and bridgen lives presentations. While we understand MCAS is a requirement and bridgen lives is important information, this should not have taken away valuable rehearsal time for band and choral students. They only practice together one day per week during the ASV block. We are unsure why other days could not have been chosen to prioritize these rehearsals for the students in Williams' programs. As you may know, fifth grade is the first year a band and chorus are offered in our district. For their second concert to be canceled for this reason is very upsetting and discouraging for students and parents. The students have retarded and families have paid for instrument lessons with the understanding that there be two concerts. The families or the students were so proud of the winter concert where they began to grow their confidence and love for performing. We are concerned about the consequences this may have on students, including some who may decide to discontinue their band and chorus participation. And parents that we may see that these programs are not valued or prioritized in our schools. Due to growing concerns over future scheduling, the band and choral directors at the Williams are now saying they are unsure whether the program will continue next year. They seem discouraged by the lack of support they have received despite requests and complaints they owe the parents, they need for over ten years. It would be extremely upsetting to have our band and chorus be setback yet another year. The circumstance further shows the importance of uniting leadership and direction of band and chorus in the district. Our district lacks any as a coordinator who could manage these types of issues. Instead, the overall music teachers have to work beyond the scope of their daily teaching duties to try to make the program work. With proper planning and foresight, the fifth graders would have been able to have their concert. We are asking you to advocate with the administration to work with the music teachers at the Williams to continue this program and provide it with the time and support it needs to teach, inspire, and encourage our new musicians. Keep your time.
Thank you very much. Jess Reno, and I do apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name wrong.
Yeah, I was mistaken. So I'm trying to reach out some side lines. So good evening. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Jessica Reno, so good job with pronunciation. I'm a member of the junior music boosters and a among two eighth grader and third grader in the district. So as Jen had mentioned, the spring fifth grade band and chorus concert was canceled due to rehearsal scheduling conflicts. So not only should this not have happened, but it was also the catalyst for the potential for canceling the fifth grade band and chorus program at the Williams. So as I mentioned, I have an eighth grader and for years it was available to fourth graders. Due to a number of reasons in the last few years, band and chorus was then made available only to fifth graders. And now even that is in jeopardy. So I think our responsibility as parents, caregivers, teachers, administrators, and the community to make sure that our children have the tools that they need to succeed in school and career world. In fact, it states right on the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District website that the superintendent in the school committee represents the educational and developmental needs and interests of all students in the district. So I really want to help everyone do that. I'm not here to place blame on anyone or anything, but I want to offer creative ideas for an actual solution. There's plenty of demand for band and chorus. So again, if there's demand, the next thing to look at would be cost. For fifth grade band, as Jen also mentioned, parents or guardians are already paying for lessons and instruments. So if the funding is for the instructors and if that's an issue, I propose we work with local organizations or universities like ESB or Stonehill College. They have music and performing arts programs to integrate maybe a practicum for graduation credit and then those teachers or students can take on that role. The district could also utilize grant writing and pre-existing advocacy groups like Safe Music Foundation to offset any other costs. Additionally, maybe band and chorus can be integrated into the budget under a health or some other thing that I don't know why I do, since studies have shown being involved in an ensemble band or chorus improves mental health as well as learning. We take up so much of students' learning time with assessments and tests after tests to see where they're at, how much of a learning gap there is, instead of actually using that precious time to take action to prevent the gap before it happens. In a 2019 study by the American Psychological Association, children who had learned to play an instrument or were involved in chorus and continued to do so in high school were the equivalent of one academic year ahead of their peers in English, math, and science, all three subjects. According to a paper published in 2022 by the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health, music education contributes to improve creativity and confidence, better mental health and emotional stability, and student performance. A 2023 article from the American Psychiatric Association states that research supports that engaging in music-making activities like ensemble bands, ensemble group chorus can facilitate emotional release, promote self-reflection, and increase our sense of creativity.
Miss Reno, you're about to wrap up.
I am, I am about to wrap up. Yeah, so we are all here, as I mentioned, because of your concern for our kids, for their well-being. So these kids deserve the opportunity to have chorus and a band to be available to them. And we really need to look at this as a holistic situation, not so much math and science, but as a whole, and it does help, it helps with their stress levels and everything. So I don't, I just really feel that it's very important to keep this program alive. We're, again, look at the benefits. I mean, we've had people in this for decades, so I'd hate to see it go away. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Felisa.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Felisa.
Cheryl.
Cheryl.
Thank you. But I say I want nothing but.
Oh, okay.
Good evening Superintendent Powers, Mr. Fitzgibbons, and members of the school committee. I am here to talk about creating a policy regarding the inclusion of residents of Bridgewater and Rainham for attending the two-part vocational schools in the BR marching band. My son is a current eighth grader, a eighth grade marching band member in good standing and will be attending VP in the fall. For many reasons, including a lack of marching band at VP, he would like to continue participating here. While US Bands, the overseeing organization for competitive marching bands, policy allows such participation. After a great deal of research, I have found no BR or state policies regarding this particular situation. Because of this, it is clear that one needs to be created in order to avoid decisions being made based on personal beliefs and philosophies. Fortunately, MIAA has very clear policies regarding athletes and participation, so allowing participation in the marching band will not negatively impact the athletics program. This is a time-sensitive issue because the new marching band season begins on July first, and we don't want this to be a quick decision. Therefore, we are requesting that until official written policy is created, the marching band director be given the discretion to allow current eighth grade members to continue with marching band as they decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Watch out for failure.
So I'm Scott Walkup. I should know some people already. So I'm here, like my wife and others, to try to approach the idea of allowing the kids who are already in band, especially in eighth grade, to continue on even if they choose to go back to the school. The question really isn't why you should allow them to do it, but why you shouldn't? Because there are a lot of little reasons you can come up with, but US Bands already promotes this idea and pushes it. As Mr. Powers has mentioned in the past, there are other schools that don't, but what he might not know is that there's a reason why some of the schools don't allow it. And for Tom and West Bridgewater, for instance, it's because they're not competitive schools, which means their marching band practices during the school day. So that's why they can't allow it. In this case, it's an after-school program. It has nothing to do with school day. So therefore, the kids, like, it's not affecting. The other reason, there are other reasons too, like if you're worried about the slippery slope argument, right? You're worried about how it's going to affect other clubs. You could come up with a specific policy that's specific to band, because to be honest and to be fair, marching band isn't ultimate frisbee. It's a bigger deal. It's an obviously bigger deal to some of these kids. And to allow them to do it is, it's a big, you know, it means a lot to that. And it means a lot to the band itself, because for every one kid that's in that band, it just positively impacts the band. It has zero negative effect on the kids in the band, right? It's not like, like sports where you're competing for, you know, special placement or whatever. So it's only a net positive to allow them to do it. If you're worried about liability, which is an argument I heard earlier, you could have them sign a waiver. If you're worried about them taking their uniforms home with them, which is part of the reason it was canceled a few years ago to begin with, because as a lot of people know, they used to allow this until it was changed recently. So if you're worried about the uniform being taken home and not returned, have the kids that are from out of, you know, that are in the BR put a deposit down for the thing. If you're worried about the cost, first of all, junior, you know, music boosters and the fees cover almost all the costs. So you're not losing any money by allowing a couple extra kids to be part of it. If it becomes a larger group, if suddenly twenty kids from the, they want to join, then you can come up with a different solution. You could say maybe they have to have tryouts. Maybe they have to pay more because they're part, they're from out of the district. There are all sorts of solutions you can come up with that can cover almost every problem that you could have. If the issue is philosophical, where you're worried, oh, well, these kids chose to go to another school and take their tax money with them, well, that wasn't your money to begin with. The money follows them where they go. If they choose to go to VP, they're not taking money from BR. And to be part of the band, once again, doesn't affect any of the budget of BR. So like I said, there's no real reason to not let them do it unless it's just a kind of broad, we don't want to deal with it. And if that's the case, if you're just not sure and there's too many details, then as my wife suggested, let the band director choose whether or not to let these kids in, because that's how it used to be anyway around here for a long time and nobody cared and it didn't affect any. So it's, you know, I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you very much.
Alain Follow.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk. Anyone can see how color guard is important to me. I love learning the new moves and the process of learning them. Marching with the rest of the band is also fun because it makes me feel part of a team. No others form me part of the team as much as marching band. I really want to stay in it because it's fun and it's a learning opportunity. What I learned in color guard is something I won't learn anything else. Band also teaches me the importance of teamwork and if I haven't joined color guard or marching band, then I wouldn't have learned how helpful working with other people is. I've also been in it for, I've also been in marching band since seventh grade, so I'm not going to start anything new. Band means working hard and taking responsibility for yourself. It also means being dependable and that people can count on you and your ability to achieve great things. Please consider allowing us to continue to be in, in being part of Bridgewater slash Rainham marching band. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you everyone for your public comment. We really do hear you and appreciate your, your passion about the subjects on which you speak. All right, moving on to consent agenda, approval minutes dated June 3rd, 2024, and approval general warrants dated May 30, 2024, is a motion to accept the consent agenda made by Mr. DeMarino, seconded by Mr. King. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. All right, administrative and school committee reports. Mr. Powers is going to give a brief superintendent's report because he is cognizant of the fact of something that's starting soon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, members of the administrative team. I do want to provide a quick update on several items. The first, you've already heard mentioned, is the track and tennis court project. The project is coming to an end. The track itself is complete. However, there's still some work that needs to be done. The tennis courts, if you've been by today, they are in the process of being painted. Two colors put down, green and blue, and obviously the line markings need to be applied as well. We do have some rain in the forecast coming up at the end of the week, so I'm not sure how much I'll actually be able to finish this week. We do need decent temperatures overnight for the tennis court for the paint to cure, so we're probably looking at, if not the end of this week, sometime next week. And then obviously site work needs to continue if you've been by. I certainly know we still have some moon that needs to be spread, some hunch list items need to be taken care of. And so although the both track and tennis court itself will be almost finished, there's still a lot of site work that needs to be done. So therefore, we are going to limit access for the foreseeable future to both of those just while the site work is being done. We certainly don't want anyone to, you know, this construction fence up there, there's still construction equipment, so we really want to limit that until the site is actually ready to be used. In the meantime, however, the tennis courts over at the Bridgewater Middle School at 166 Mont Prospect Street are still open and will remain open. Those nets are up. We have four courts over there, so any member of the town of Bridgewater or town of Rainham will reuse those courts while the project is going on and continue to provide updates on the track and tennis court project as they can be. I also wanted to provide a quick review of the budget at the last school committee meeting and provide you a sense of where we're at. I just wanted to inform you that we'll be sending out a correspondence basically summarizing all the past correspondences that we have sent out to the families through the BR Buzz and also what we've shared with you here at school committee. So that will be going out sometime the remainder of this week. But basically, as you know, as I've shared in the past, we were really looking at a net-wide 25 budget season that's been somewhat challenging. Our state aid increased by a little over one percent where the last two years it's been an average of fifteen percent. We obviously took our aid from the state, from the towns as well, but that certainly was not enough to cover some of our cost drivers that we've discussed in the past, such as our contractual obligations, transportation, health insurance, utilities, obviously costs associated with special education. Sometimes those placements, we were just talking earlier, you can't always anticipate those placements and they are sometimes costly. And so we, as much as tried to budget and pre-purchase, some of those items, we're not always able to do so. So those cost drivers plus our contractual obligations, as you know, we entered into negotiations with three of our unions, three of the four unions this year. We're still currently negotiating with one, but we were able to settle with two of the three. But obviously there's a cost associated with those contracts, even though we were able to really try to keep those cost drivers down, there were still about another million dollars worth of anticipated costs for those contractual obligations. So in total, we're looking at about a four and a half million dollar shortfall. Obviously, I've shared with you the community that we first looked at any goods, services, materials, expenses that could reduce. We were trying to do everything we could to avoid any type of personnel action. However, that wasn't possible. We can only cut so many things from the budget. We still need to have the lights on. We still need to heat the buildings. We still need to maintain our facilities. We need to buy supplies for our buildings. I will tell you, we have drastically reduced those line items, so we certainly will be providing, purchasing the level of supplies and materials that we have in the past. So what we first did was looked at any potential retirement, leave of absence coming up for next year, resignation, that position would be open. We wanted to try to eliminate any positions that way or decrease funding, I'm sorry, decrease expenses that way. And then certainly if that didn't make up the shortfall, then looking at having to reduce the number of current staff members. And so unfortunately, as I shared with you already, we did send out eleven non-renewal notices to the budgetary constraints, and I just wanted to kind of review those positions. So in addition to any open position because of retiring or resignation or leave, those eleven positions, we have been able to thankfully, now that both towns have passed the budget, we have a better sense of what next year will look like, we have been able to call back some of those positions. I don't anticipate us being able to call back all of those positions, certainly not prior to the end of the school year. As I've shared with you, some of these positions are going to have, you know, a negative impact on class size. Our main goal in making these decisions was first to try to maintain class size as close as possible to this year and also programming as well. And so just to kind of give you a quick review of positions that will not be filled for next year, we have one first grade teacher at Merrill that will not be filled. Average class size this year is twenty-seven. Because we have a low enrollment coming up from kindergarten, class size next year lies at twenty-six. So even though we have one less teacher, in that grade level, class size is lower. And certainly twenty-six is, we know it's not something that we would advocate, but given our unfortunate situation, it's something that, you know, right now we're dealing with. One grade two teacher at Law Liberty, grade two class size right now is at twenty-six. Next year will be at twenty-seven. Again, we're going to do some internal shifting there to be able to provide that certain teacher adequate to. We have one grade two teacher at Mitchell that we're not filling. Class size again this year was twenty-eight, next year will be twenty-seven. Again, smaller class coming up in first grade and the second grade as well, we're able to do that. We have reduced the number of teachers at Bridgewater Middle School. We have essentially eliminated, we had a couple retirements that didn't fill those with new staff. We've again moved staff around to fill some of those openings, which resulted in essentially eliminating one of our teens in seventh grade. So right now, we have an ELA teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher at EMS. That class size, you know, impact will roughly be twenty-five to twenty-seven. Rainham Middle School again reducing three staff members over there. We had a few leave of absences for the upcoming school year that we chose not to fill, but again moving staff members around to help offset some of these challenges. So I have one ELA teacher, one science teacher, and one social studies teacher. Depending on the grade level, we're looking at anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-six or twenty-five to twenty-seven respectively. At the high school, high school, you know, class size numbers are a little bit more difficult to calculate because we don't necessarily know, I mean, we have a projection of how many students will actually take a particular subject, but that could obviously change. Students can add, drop, and so forth. But our best projection for next year, we're reducing one ELA teacher at the high school, so we'll go from twenty-two to twenty-four. we're reducing one ELA teacher at the high school, so we'll go from 22 to 24. We're reducing one math teacher at the high school, 21 to 23. Our biggest impact will be in oral language. We actually had three oral language teachers. A couple, one retired, one resignation, one non-renewal. But we are filling one of those, so we'll go from 24 to approximately 30. And then one social studies teacher at the high school, as you know, unfortunately, we have already been there. And so that will also go similar numbers, 25 to 30, if all students continue to take those levels. We certainly have tried to spread this impact across the district, so not just teaching positions. Currently, we have three administrative positions that we're not filling. The assistant principal at Law Liberty and Merrill, the coordinator of diversity, equity, inclusion, and a business office position of payroll. We're also not filling a retirement in special education, of course, the special education secretary. We had a number of custodians put in for retirement. We're not filling all of those retirements. So we'll be down two and a half custodians and property positions. We had some resignations and retirements there. So we'll be down four property positions. What we really hope to do at this point is obviously, you know, review the positions. Obviously, working with the business office and Ms. Babalola as end-of-year funds become more available or we have a better sense of what may be available, we may be able to do additional pre-purchasing with some of those end-of-year funds, which then frees up money in the FY '25 budget. If we're able to free up significant amount of funds, we might be actually able to bring back some of these teaching positions. They would certainly be a one-year long-term position unless we can actually build it into the budget long-term. And also our state grants. As you know, we get those allocations throughout the summer, for Title I, Title II, III, and IV. However, there are some restrictions with those grants. So even though, you know, our Title I grant is our largest award, it has in the past been over $500,000. A lot of restrictions in specific spending requirements on that. So it's not as though we could just take that money and go out and hire, you know, six new classroom teachers. It really has to be designated towards Title I activities and Title I expenses. But again, there may be some opportunities to take money from the operational budget and chuck it there. Title II does allow for class size reduction. So depending on our funding for next year, for Title II, we may be able to use some leftover money from this year, combined with next year to cover teacher salary. So there could be some additional moves throughout the summer. We hope to be able to, you know, bring back some of these positions. Certainly, depending on your lens, your closeness to these positions, I think anyone could stand up here and argue the importance of any of these positions. I certainly could do that myself. We realize that all of these positions, but certainly a few, will potentially have a negative impact on the district. And so we're working as a central office team to make sure that we can minimize that impact. And then if the responsibilities of certain positions that are not being filled have to be taken on by other administrators such as itself or the central office team or building-based teams, we'll certainly do that. But as we work on those edge action plans throughout the summer, we'll be communicating those to the families. Happy to answer any questions about that?
Questions for Mr. Powers? Mr. Loesch?
So with the kind of DEI calling, what is the district's plan to continue on now?
So I can kind of talk in broad terms, Mr. Loesch. That's obviously something that we, you know, know we need to really put pen to paper this summer and have concrete plans. Right now, our initial plans are to divide up some of those responsibilities, such as, you know, teaching and learning, when we look at our curriculum. We can ensure we're looking at our resources. Ms. Richards and Ms. Joyce will assume that responsibility. Obviously, Ms. Hart, looking at our students with disabilities, will take on those responsibilities as of now. Ms. Moore, our coordinator of family and student supports, will take on some additional responsibilities, obviously, because we don't necessarily have that one person kind of championing this effort. Certainly, that, you know, I will assume that responsibility as well. We do have a continued partnership with our DEI, professional development provider. They have... Obviously, they've been working with us now for a number of years. And so that is something that we'll continue to do. We'll hire them to do some of our professional development going forward. Looking at North River Collaborative is bringing on a DEI consultant as well. So it is something that we need to tap into, Collaborative, for that, we will. But certainly, I think as we're able to kind of digest all of this as a team, we'll be able to have a clearer plan and a more actionable plan to share with the community as we force it to school. But we realize, you know, how vital this position is. Ms. Barrio was, obviously, was the first one to step into this role, and she's really moved the district forward. Can't thank her enough. It's unfortunate that, you know, we had to delete that position. She's had a very positive impact on the district. But we're committed to the work. You know, it's not something that has to be good if a position is going away that we're going to take with us. We know how important it is for our students, for our families, for our staff, and we're fully committed to it.
Other questions from this side?
Just one last item, Mr. Fitzgibbons, if I may. We just... We do have a number of retirees, as I mentioned, so I just wanted to take a moment and quickly acknowledge them. And I certainly hope I've captured everybody on this list unless we've had somebody sneak in towards the end here. But just to kind of run down the running list. Ms. Robin Murray, Ms. Elaine Watson, Ms. Pat Armstrong, Ms. Laura O'Ryan, Mr. Damon Young, Ms. Diane Power, Ms. Karen Greenberg, Ms. Karen Harrington, Ms. Jean Lee, Mr. Steve Barbosa, Ms. Beth Fluckley, Ms. Priscilla McCray, Ms. Rosemary Donovan, Ms. Dawn Holt, Ms. Deborah Cole, Ms. Lisa Bumpus, Ms. Laura Conley, Mr. Peter Boone, Mr. Robert Levy, Mr. Paul Matic, Ms. Lisa Omen, Ms. Karen Ivanovic, Ms. Nancy Comptons, Ms. Dean Cummings, Ms. Patricia Needham, and Ms. Christine Sprecher. Hopefully, I didn't miss anybody. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank them for their years of service to the district. Some of them have been here, you know, 30-plus years, and so they certainly leave a void and have had such a great impact. And lastly, I just wanted to, again, review some administrative changes as well as I've shared with the committee and with the community. Mr. Metropolis will be the new principal of the water middle school. Mr. Kaliff, as you know, well, you may not know, I believe you do, will be transitioning up to the high school as an assistant principal. So they are essentially swapping. Mr. Pulis, the assistant principal at Law Liberty and Merrill, has tendered his resignation, so he will not be returning. And I also wanted to acknowledge that we have one special education administrator, Ms. Rachel Joseph, who, I believe, Ms. Healy had already shared this with you, has taken on a new position, uh, within outside special education agency, so she's leading public education altogether. But thankfully, we were able to add Mr. Krista Sylvan. She is currently the director of student services at Old Collin. Prior to that, she was a assistant director of special education in Anniston. So we're very excited to have her join our team at some point this summer. And as you know, we are in the process of hiring the assistant principal at Bridgewater Middle School. We hope to have that position filled over the next week or so. We'll certainly share the information hopefully in the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. All right, moving on. Ms. King, budget subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Monday, June 3rd, 2024, the budget subcommittee met at 5:30 PM in the North River Library. In attendance were Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Mrs. Stabencliff, Superintendent Towers, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Mrs. Babalola, the Director of Business Services, Ms. Robuchon, the Director, Reporting Secretary, Mrs. McDougal, and myself. First on the agenda was fiscal year 2024 budget update. Ms. Babalola went over the fiscal 2024 budget regarding year-end transfers that would need to be approved by the committee by the end of July as well as end-of-year budget items that would need to be approved by the end of June. We had a lengthy discussion regarding the transfer of monies into the IT stabilization account regarding the one-to-one problem we're issuing. Mrs. Babalola also went over the fiscal year 2024 account balances and the lines that we have been monitoring, such as the substitute line, transportation, district tuition, and utilities, such as heat and electricity. Ms. Babalola would also bring forward the base account end-of-year balance following the end of the year, which should be in July. No action was taken at that time. Fiscal year 2025 budget update. Mr. Powers gave an update on fiscal year 2025 budget. He did give a detailed report just now, so we're not going to get. No action was taken regarding that. We also received a facilities update. The RMS general project did come in higher than anticipated at that time. However, Mr. Phil Ward, the facilities director, was able to work with the insurance company and receive a supplemental check to cover the difference. So we still are only going to need to pay the $50,000 deductible. It is my belief that that project should actually start the day after the last day of school. Mr. Powers gave the update at that time regarding the track and tennis court project, as we just did a few minutes ago. And that's near complete. We're just finishing touches on the areas to be completed over the first thing in September. No action was taken regarding that. We did approve the budget subcommittee minutes by May 14, 2024. Secondly, the budget subcommittee also met on Wednesday, June 12, right before this evening at 5:30 here in the lecture hall of Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. In attendance were Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Superintendent Howard, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Business Director Ms. Babalola, Director of Mr. Robuchon, Mrs. McDougal, our reporting secretary, myself. The first item of business was the fiscal year 2024 budget update. We do have the transfers recommended by Ms. Babalola that need to be done by the end of this fiscal year of June 30. The remaining transfers regarding the end-of-year budget will be in July evening. For these three transfers that need to be done, the first of which is a transfer of $50,000 from the fiscal year 2024 budget to deposit into the stabilization fund. Again, these are upon recommendation of Ms. Babalola, the Director of Business Services. According to Ms. Martelli, I would make a motion to approve the transfer of $50,000 from the fiscal year 2024 budget to deposit into the stabilization fund.
Motion made by Ms. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loesch. Ms. King, any further discussion on that motion?
No.
Mr. Loesch, any discussion? Anyone else? Discussion on the motion? See, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Continuing with the budget. Ms. King?
Thank you. The second motion on the recognition of Ms. Babalola, Mr. Chairman, I would give a motion to approve the transfer of $10,000 from the fiscal year 2024 budget to deposit into the old debt pension fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loesch. Discussion, Ms. King, any further? Mr. Loesch, any other discussion? See, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. These two still have the floor. They're still at the table.
I counted.
All right, continuing, Ms. King.
Finally, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the transfer of $10,000 from the fiscal year 2024 budget to deposit into the unfunded liability fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loesch. Anything further on that, Ms. King? Mr. Loesch, any discussion? Any discussion from the rest of the committee? See, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
As I stated, we did have a discussion regarding a transfer of IT stabilization money. We did not bring that forward yet. We felt comfortable waiting until after Ms. Babalola was... What the bottom line was going to be at the end of the fiscal year. So that would be brought forward after July, November, December. So we're not recommending any transfer regarding IT stabilization right now.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the fiscal year end discussion, regarding that, Ms. Babalola is completing the end-of-year warrants. I believe she still has two warrants to close out this year. Once she is done with that, she and the business office will work on closing out the end of the year. The EMD that we're ending does not get certified until October, but she should have a guess for that by hopefully next meeting. Just to see, we want to just make sure that we are going to end the $2 million that we've already said that we're going to put into this budget to offset the assessments. So she will confirm that with us. She feels confident that we do. But she'll let us know at the next meeting what this is looking like. Again, she's wanting me to say, does not get certified until October. But she will give me her best estimate once she closes out the books June 30. Also, in July, once we close out everything, we will have the final transfers. So at the beginning of the year, we start with our budget of what every line item is and where everything is encountered. Once she closes out the year at the end of June, we will have final transfers of where things need to be transferred. For instance, if we needed to move transportation lines, we're not changing the bottom line or any money spent or income, but we're just making sure that all the line items are ending correctly and we certify that to the SEC. So all of those final transfers will be at the July evening. We're also, again, until she closes out everything, we're still watching the substitute line, out-of-day substitution, any last-minute things that we need to keep an eye on those bottom lines. Electricity, we're pretty much over the heating system, seasonality. But substitute line, definitely, we look at the last month with teachers and staff and take the main personal days or vacation time. So I think that's all. We're just going to complete all of that in at the July meeting to wrap up the end of the year. Regarding fiscal year 2025 budget update, Mr. Powers just presented his discussion on our status right now. If there's any update to that, we will give that at the July as well. If there's been any changes or different callbacks, depending on when we close out the year. We did approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2024 of the budget subcommittee meeting. Regarding other, we did have a couple of other items that came up. As a FYI, Ms. Robuchon indicated that she is still waiting to collect final monies from Chapter 70 and Chapter 71 from the state. And she's hoping to have that in by June 30. Again, any... Anything, again, going back to the last item, the one thing that Ms. Babalola also will need to have a vote on is any outstanding voices and purchase orders that are still pending. So things that we've ordered and not received to date that are going to be left open on any of those, she'll also bring forward at the next meeting. We'll have to go back into next year's budget and sort of approve that. So just FYI regarding the Chapter 70 and 71, we're still waiting for the final money to come from the state for this fiscal year. As a number two of it, Ms. Robuchon brought forward from the treasurer, high school athletic fees. We budgeted $150,000 for revenue, which we think was a little bit high. Last year's what came in for budget for revenue under high school athletics was 110. However, this year, we've only gone in 8,000. So there was a shortfall there. We do rely on that monies at the high school. So we have asked the business office to look into that, all of the high school athletics, to make sure that all of these were collected. Were there less athletes that were participating this year versus the prior year? So we can look at that and see if, in fact, we're not budgeting correctly for that or if there's been a draw off there and where it is. So we will report out on that at the next meeting or after that when we receive that information. And then lastly, Mr. Powers pointed out on the track and test courts, which he had already made a history report on. And that was the end of that. That concludes my budget subcommittee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. King. Moving on, policy subcommittee report, Mr. DeMarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Policy subcommittee met this evening, June 12, about 6:30. We had a lecture hall. In attendance was myself, Mr. Loesch, Mr. Conrad, Dr. Rento, Superintendent Mr. Powers, as well as the reporting secretary, Mr. McDougal. Two items were on the agenda. First was discussion on potential new policy surrounding extracurricular activities, which the general body heard from parents regarding this evening. After discussing that policy or creation of that policy, several questions were asked of Mr. Powers, the one which being liability, whether or not those, if we do open, create a policy to allow this to happen, how it will affect our insurance policy. Mr. Powers indicated that he would give us that information that discussion was tabled for the next policy meeting. The next item was a review and changes to the district's concussion policy. This was brought forward by the NFL athletic trainer, Mr. Keith Smith, based upon changes in regulations and how doctors have been treated based life testing. in, uh, regulations and how doctors have been treating baseline testing. Uh, a red line version will be presented at the next subcommittee meeting so that we have something to present to the full board on all the changes so that we can see what is coming out and, um, because of the changes in how doctors are now treating, uh, concussions. That was taken until the next subcommittee meeting as well. That was our sub, subcommittee policy meeting, Mr. DeMarino.
Questions from Mr. DeMarino? Just one question, Mr. DeMarino.
Yes.
On the concussion policy, you want to come back out, it'll be a first reading and then we'll have to go back and have a second reading.
Correct. We just wanted, uh, the full board to agree to see what exactly was changing.
Uh, the, and the reason for my question is, we should be able to put it in place before the beginning of the next full year. If we have a meeting in August as well, we could have, uh, meeting in July and then in August.
Correct. And Mr. Powers, we address that, that with that, that we still give enough time for students that wish to still have that based on the testing plan to, to complete and have that provision.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, uh, superintendent evaluation, um, each year, uh, well, right now we're on each year, um, the school committee evaluates the superintendent, and I'm going to, as the chair, report on the evaluation that the entire school committee settled on as a, an evaluation of the superintendent. Just so everyone, uh, follows at home and in the audience, um, it's kind of a, uh, majority rules. I get all of the chair, I should say, gets all of the, uh, evaluations from each individual member. Confidently, no members talk to each other about their own evaluations. The chair then compiles them and whatever, uh, ratings the superintendent gets by, uh, section, that's, that's the majority rule. So when, anyone hears, whoops, sorry about that, when anyone hears me talking about something, it's the committee talking as a whole, uh, it doesn't necessarily reflect all of my views, it doesn't necessarily reflect all of Mr. Loesch's views, it reflects the consensus of the committee, not to pick on you, Mr. Loesch. Um, so we, we had three goals the superintendent was working toward, and we'll get into those in a little bit. Uh, professional practice, student learning, and district improvement, and he was rated by the school committee as having met all those goals this year. We had, um, four, uh, s- performance on standards, uh, which is essentially what, um, how, how he's doing his job, and, uh, there are four levels of that. Unsatisfactory is performance on the standard or overall has not significantly improved following the ratings of needs improvement, or performance is consistently below the requirements of the standard or overall and is considered inadequate or low. Needs improvement slash developing, performance on the standard or overall is below the requirements of the standard or overall, but is not considered to be unsatisfactory in time, improvement is necessarily expected. Proficient, proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is the rigorous expected level of performance. An exemplary, uh, a rating of exemplary indicates the practice significantly exceeds provision and considered as a model of practice regionally or statewide. There were four standards on which the school committee, uh, rated the superintendent for this past year. I will delve deeper into them, uh, again, in a few minutes. Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Uh, under each of those standards, the superintendent was rated as proficient. Um, so suits the superintendent is rated overall as proficient for the last three years, I just said. Uh, generally, the school committee felt as follows. Mr. Powers continues to provide calm and steady leadership of the district. Superintendent Powers' first year as the superintendent showed that he was the right person for the job. Overall, I feel Mr. Powers is doing a fantastic job. I think he had a really good year for his first official year as the superintendent of the district. Mr. Powers has shown leadership, professionalism, and commitment to our staff, our students, and their families. He welcomed new staff, families, and students throughout the year in a manner that was supportive and showed his strong leadership and character. Uh, Mr. Powers has made great strides this year since taking on the role, his role of superintendent. While this was the general tenor of the evaluations that were received, there were significant comments related mostly to the budget process, which included approved capital plan and IT plans and budget means better alignment and student success goals and measurable outcomes. Financial updates need quantifiable data to support conclusions. Hopefully, in the next year, Superintendent Powers can find a solution where the district can take steps forward and stop having our teachers and students settle for less than they deserve. And with regards to the budget, we, the school committee, as well as the superintendent, all of them, a needs improvement in this area. It would be important to continue to regularly meet with various stakeholders and town officials to have a good grasp of what the future holds and with the dim fiscal outlook already known, continue, uh, to look at ways of doing more with less. So as you can see, there was someone who rated it needs improvement, but the consensus of the committee was a met. All right, moving through the performance goals, we thought we, we had a student learning goal, and it was focused, uh, on the curriculum, instruction and assessment, uh, and it was that student, the superintendent would during the year oversee the expansion of I-ready to the high school level, uh, where targeted ninth grade students, uh, will continue to be administered the diagnostic assessment and be provided with remediation and/or intervention in order to accelerate their learning, learning and performance. At our last meeting, uh, the superintendent did provide, uh, his evidence, uh, for meeting that goal, and the, uh, committee as a whole agreed that he did meet that goal. Uh, the second professional practice goal, uh, the superintendent was going to participate in the new superintendent's induction program to develop skills in stra- in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership by actively engaging in the program. Again, the superintendent presented evidence to the school committee that led a majority of the school comit- committee to believe he met that goal. And we had two, uh, district improvement goals around, uh, first one being around safety and support of schools, uh, curriculum instruction and assessment, operations, human capital. Uh, during the school year, the superintendent would collaborate with, uh, district and school administration to ensure district and school priorities are aligned with the student success plan and the, and the progress towards that alignment is monitored, and that was rated as a meets, meets us, thus, thus, the goal there. And finally, the district improvement goal too, uh, around the student success plan. Uh, I will work with the Director of Business Services in collaboration with district leadership and the leadership of each town to develop a sound fiscal budget that aligns the district priorities of the student success plan and promotes student achievement despite the fiscal forecast. And again, it was rated as a meets. So moving into the standards, there are many different standards that the Department, uh, of Education, uh, puts out, and the school committee chooses a few of under each, uh, standard to evaluate on. So this year, under instructional leadership, uh, we chose to evaluate on curriculum, and that mean, that meant that, uh, superintendent ensures that all instructional staff design, uh, effective and rigorous standards based the units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes, and he was rated as proficient there. Uh, evaluation, uh, ensured that the superintendent would ensure effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions, and again, the superintendent presented evidence to the effect that he had, uh, done that, done that proficiently, and the, uh, school committee agreed that was proficient. Uh, data-informed decision-making, uh, uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning, and that was rated as proficient, and so therefore instructional leadership overall was rated as proficient. Generally, the school committee felt the superintendent met this goal. There was a concern expressed around data-informed decision-making, that financial updates should provide quantifiable, quantifiable data to strengthen the committee's understanding of our financial health. For instance, instead of just being told we're in good shape, a more informative update might include spending rate and target comparisons or other specific metrics that demonstrate positive financial trends. This would allow for a more data-driven assessment of our financial position. Uh, under student performance, uh, rating for standard two, management objectives. The, um, one, uh, item we chose to evaluate the superintendent on this year was that the superintendent would develop a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school level goals and available resources. Uh, the school committee found his, uh, execution on that proficient. Uh, the majority of the school committee viewed the superintendent's performance under this standard as proficient. Uh, some school committee members felt that the superintendent could do more in regard to, in regard to being proactive in the budget process to achieve better results and clearer communication around the budget with the member towns and the school committee, as I noted above. Moving on to performance standard three, family and community engagement. We chose to rate on, uh, the engagement metric here. And, uh, the, the measurement criteria would be, uh, act, that the superintendent actively ensures that all families have welcomed members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community. Uh, the school committee found him to be proficient in that. Um, continuing, uh, the theme of this review, the school committee, uh, found the superintendent to be proficient, but noted, uh, I'd recommend the superintendent follow the transition plan and evaluate existing communication strategies. If needed, clarification on the school committee's expectations is crucial. This includes how school incidents are reported, response time, transparency, action steps. The superintendent should proactively work with the committee to ensure clear expectations for both committee members and the community. And then another note that the communication to the community can be better with more creative ways to increase engagement. Um, and then the last, uh, standard was professional culture. Uh, we chose to rate, uh, on continuous learning. Uh, the superintendent would develop and nurture culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. That the superintendent would model these behaviors in his own practice. Uh, this was one where the school committee was unanimous in rating the superintendent proficient. This was noted as an important aspect of helping the district move forward. That is the superintendent's evaluation for school year twenty-three, twenty-four. I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve it as the school committee's, uh, evaluation of the superintendent. So made by Mr. DeMarino, seconded by Mr. Loesch, discussion, Mr. DeMarino, uh, Mr. Loesch, any discussion? Ms. King, any discussion? Any discussion, Ms. King? No. Okay, uh, then hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, all right, nope. You gotta strike all the ayes on.
Um, I just want to say, I'm glad that we, as a committee, agreed that he was proficient and met his goals. Um, I just want to put on there for the record that some of them had made comments or involved them to the actual standard that was listed there, um, that that member might have put down. In seven years on the committee, this was the first year that I am so thankful that things were positive, um, and transparent with the staff and students and the community. Um, for his first year as a superintendent, I have been so impressed with his outreach and his ability to take charge of the situation, work with everyone involved, like the, um, staff, the students, um, and taking care of everything and not escalating to the school committee as our CEO of the district. Um, so I just wanted to say that on the record.
Thank you, Ms. King. And, uh, want to add something?
Mrs. King just wrapped it up, then Miss Bugg.
Okay. And we're, we must be ready to take the vote now, there's been a motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you, congratulations, Mr. Powers, very nice review. Uh, all right, so now, approval of payroll, and we've still got five. Approval of payroll warrants dated, uh, May thirty, twenty twenty-four is our motion.
So.
Made by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. DeMarino. Discussion, Ms. King, Mr. DeMarino. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, Ms. Martelli's going back. All right, if anyone's looking for some good kitchen equipment, slightly used, this was, this next item's for you. Uh, declaration of surplus obsolete kitchen equipment. Um, so, uh, essentially, we have some obsolete food service equipment, uh, and we need to declare it so and allow us to move on from it. Is there a motion?
Second.
By Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Conrad, Dr. Rento. Any discussion, Ms. King? Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. DeMarino.
So, looking at this and the, um, little schematic that, um, St. Delight supply to replace this equipment, is that going to be, uh, we as a district having to replace this or buy new stuff, or is this something that Chartwell's does, uh, for, you know, all the area, I guess?
Yes, uh, so it, it, when we look at equipment, uh, with Chartwell's, uh, certainly depends on the, the actual item. Uh, we do have an account where, um, you know, money that is brought in through Chartwell's program, lunch program, breakfast program, uh, does go to offset some of this equipment. Uh, there are certain items that, uh, Chartwell's themselves, uh, actually will purchase. Uh, this particular replacement, I, I can't answer that question, Mr. DeMarino, I can certainly find out, uh, if this is something that we are purchasing for.
Right, and some of them are being used as grant money.
Was that grant, is that just general grant money or specific grant money that is earmarked for student lunches, breakfast, and stuff?
It's specifically needed to be, uh, for previous time.
And that account that, uh, we have set aside, Chartwell's in there corresponding, but then we don't, we can't use that for, you know, so it's specifically used to that, so it's not, we're not redirecting, um, you know, funds from other areas of the budget to, to areas.
Just kind of, you know, looking at it, seeing, you know, used, can't, cannot be fixed, not any references to, from St. Delight, why it can't be fixed, what efforts would need to be, essentially be fixed, and hearing how dim the financial outlook is and everything, um, clearly, um, you know, it, that's concerning, especially looking at his memo where there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items that in the near future, as he puts, they're going to be trying to make changes to the buildings and whether, are those changes going to be capital items that we are paying for as a district, or is Chartwell's fixing to go for that?
Uh, in, in terms of, um, those items, a lot of those items will come out of, uh, it would be a combination of Chartwell's, uh, if there's any, like, you know, for example, um, you're looking at, say, like the flats or the TV displays, that wouldn't necessarily be, you know, that would come money out of the, uh, funds that are generated by Chartwell's for the district. Um, you know, the tables, uh, the steam tables, BMS law, those would come specifically out of that. of that account. So it, it's not, again, redirecting funds from another area of the budget. That will be paid for by funds generated through the breakfast and lunch program. I think that answers your question.
And just to be clear, you know, Mr. Powers, the breakfast and lunch program, we have money from state from that because that was passed into the recent budget.
Kind of correct, yes, we, yep, we are reimbursed. We do provide breakfast and lunch to our, to our students. Certainly, if they elect to purchase a snack, additional lunch, we'll have charges for that, but the basic breakfast and lunch program is free.
Is that reimbursed at a hundred percent?
It might be, but I think, yes.
Further, Mr. DeMarino?
I would just, you know, with this, I understand that, you know, it is a contractor, but looking at the number of items he's looking in the near future to change, and then no personal information or data, Mr. Delisle would come in personally to explain these items, that's all.
And if I may jump on that, suggest to Ms. King, maybe we can put that out of budget? Committee at some point just to understand?
But I mean, to my knowledge, like Mr. Powers said, that this is sub-funded through this revolving account, so it has not had an impact on the operation budget.
But if they start to get more money, we may need to raise fees, and those are all going to be, et cetera, you know, then it would just be good to allay Mr. DeMarino's concerns, I think. All right, anything further on the surplus? Get your vitamins. Seeing none, there hasn't been a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous? No?
No.
No, okay. So, Mr. DeMarino, voting in the negative, everyone else voting in the affirmative? All right, other business, I am not aware of any, seeing none, try not to have that come up a lot. All right, public comment, again, if folks want to speak again in public comment, we are open for another twelve minutes per school committee policy. Mr. Walkup, yep, feel free, and again, the same rules, three minutes per and twelve minutes in total.
Good evening again, I'm Michelle Walkup. I'd just like to address some concerns regarding attendance, grades, and conduct for non-BR students in Marching Band, which is a valid concern. Marching Band, we're thinking, the Marching Band handbook could include some writing that the BP or AGI students have to present their report cards to the director throughout the year. This will address grades, attendance, and conduct. Also, if the school committee creates a policy that allows only eighth grade Marching Band members to continue, if they do not go to BR, they will not be unknowns, and the director could also have the final say as to whether they should be allowed to continue based on their experience the prior year. All non-BR students should be treated the same. The BR policy for homeschooling allows participation of homeschooled students in extra activity with the superintendent's approval. They are unknown students, we don't know their grades, they haven't their grades, we don't know what they're doing at home, there's no attendance record, and there's also no state money coming from them. So, and also, finally, the more marching students in the band, more family members attending, attend football games, and they are paying entrance fees, and that will help increase the academic economy that we, that was discussed earlier. So those are just some comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Anyone else in public comment? And or otherwise? One, two, it's going twice? So, okay, thanks very much, everybody who's been here, listened, participated, we certainly really do appreciate it. I have no announcements, does any one on the committee have an announcement, Mr. DeMarino?
Thank you, Mr. DeMarino. For our students that need community service hours, the Reagan Ten New All-Star Team will be hosted, the Cal Ripken Eastern Mass State Tournament on, starting June twenty-eighth running through July fifth, the team is looking for volunteers to help staff the snack shack as well as assist with ground responsibilities and parking assistance. Great way to knock off those community service hours right at the start of the summer so that you're not scrambling. So if any family, student, or parent would like to see if it's available for their kids, please feel free to reach out to me. The information also will be up on the WISMA website shortly.
Miss Conrad Alberdo?
Just to follow up to Mr. DeMarino, I would hope when you can share with the speech, because I think she did the volunteer stuff at the high school, or Mrs. Watson, because it gets a blast out of all the school kids. She blasted all the high school kids when they bombed their off- carries, and I know there's a lot of people, so they can go there for answers.
Any other, Ms. King?
Just two things, Mr. Chairman. Budget Subcommittee, the next meeting will be July fifteenth at five thirty at the Super Junior's Conference Room. And then I just wanted to announce District Advisory Council that this morning, and Ms. Frey, I would like to get the two, the co-chairs, the president and the co-chairs, Richard Corey, who is here, and Conde, who's also here. So we'll step right up again, District Advisory Council.
Great. No other announcements from us, okay. Moving on, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So adjourned.
Made by Mr. DeMarino, seconded by Miss Martelli, all those in favor?